Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We're happy to have you and I'm happy that you're all abuzz. And but it's we'll we'll try to get started now with some quiet. And so good evening and thank you for joining us. Welcome to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three Eugene City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast twenty channel twenty-one, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the city's public webcast and meeting materials webpage. Tonight's meeting does include a public forum. If you wish to speak during the public forum and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form. Now, I'm understanding we have a problem with that. So council has staff has been circling back around to create a spreadsheet. Where I'm going to allow an extra five minutes to seven forty for people to sign up because we were sort of interrupted access and hope that everyone who really wants to speak to us has that opportunity. And I I don't know if that does that apply for people who are trying to reach by phone also? Is that impacting their ability to sign up as well?
No. Ability to star nine and then it would be added to the list.
Okay, so on the phone, you still have the ability to press star star nine to be added to the list. And the last three digits of your phone number will be added to the speakers queue. And of course, I'm happy to see all the folks in the audience. And then as a reminder, our 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 meeting rules of conduct discourage or prohibit flagged signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or any conduct that obstructs the business of council. We are looking to keep this room a safe place for people to express their opinions clearly to council. And you always have the opportunity to wave your fingers in silent support. And I think that's I think that probably takes care of all of that. So with that, I will only open the meeting with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuaia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. Today's land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and of honoring native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty-one and eighteen fifty-five, Kalapuaia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the coast reservation in Western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuaia Illahi. Kalapuaia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. And with that, I am going to move into our ceremonial matter, which in this case is a proclamation, just one proclamation in recognition of the thirty-third anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is pretty impressive. And we all, some of us are old enough to really remember what the world was like before that. And and it's and it's a better place now. Whereas, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, establishing a clear and comprehensive mandate for the elimination of discrimination to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas, the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing opportunities for full participation and inclusion in community life. And whereas, continued commitment to the principles of the ADA is necessary to help individuals with disabilities reach their full potential. And whereas, the city of Eugene encourages community members to reaffirm the principles of equity, inclusion, and belonging as laid out in the ADA. The city continues its commitment and efforts to reach full ADA compliance so that every person in our city has the opportunity to succeed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lucy Venice, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to be the thirty-third anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act in Eugene and encourage all community members to commemorate the ADA, recognizing and celebrating the progress that has been wait, the progress that has been made as well as committing to ADA principles. Thank you all for for honoring this moment. And with that, we're ready to move on to council business as committee reports and items of interest. So are there councillors with news to share? Counselor Evans?
Yeah, council, Mayor, I want to share the IGR report. The IGR committee met last week, July fifth, to review and discuss the legislative priorities, which I will roughly outline. After the longest walkout in Oregon history, legislature carried the last nine days with intense activity in both chambers as budget and policy bills moved forward, or in some instances didn't. Wrapping up with the sign, sign, signed, sign of the day on Sunday afternoon at four thirty, just hours before the constitutional deadline. The good news, the legislature passed historic levels of statewide funding for housing supports and rental assistance. Local funding successes include Lane County received five million dollars for the development of the stabilization center. Homes for Good received four point nine million dollars for the Naval Reserve Affordable Housing Project. And the Eugene Civic Alliance received five million dollars to complete renovations at Civic Park. Two point seven million dollars for cities statewide to implement the C F E C unhoused response efforts, received one hundred and nine million dollars to flow to the Oregon Housing and Community Services to support House Bill two thousand and one. Housing, shelter, and unhoused programs managed by regional MACs and arts and entertainment venues in Eugene receive funding as well. The legislature also passed House Bill twenty-seven fifty-seven, which creates a dedicated funding source, forty cents per month tax on prepaid and retail telecom transactions for the nine eight eight crisis hotline system, as well as providing pathways for cities to access crisis response funding. Yet the devil is in the details on how we can realistically access assess these access access these funds. The bad news, Eugene's top three funding requests went unfunded. House Bill two thousand and one was passed with preemptive measures, which our staff will work through to fully understand the implications for Eugene. Local government ability to prohibit firearms in public buildings was stripped from the gun control bill. House Bill twenty-seven fifty-seven included a preemption on local governments on assessing a telecom tax to fund the nine eight eight crisis response programs. House Bill thirty-four oh nine is a large climate funding package, and there's historic housing funding. Both will help Eugene implement the C R O and the H I P. Last month, the Biden administration announced that Oregon will receive six hundred and eighty-eight million dollars from the Infrastructure Act to broad broadband deployment. The legislature passed updates to broadband programs to align with federal requirements. Across housing, climate, and broadband, we expect to be competitive and successful for grant requests over the next few years. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. That was a lot of information. So I appreciate that summary. Any other? Oh, yes, I have Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank our firefighters for the work that they did on the Moon Mountain Fire. Fast-moving fire and under extremely dry conditions caused by climate change and other factors, low humidity, high winds. It was a red flag day. I got to tour the site with Chief Caven on the evening of Fourth of July, and it was very difficult access to get into it. The terrain was rugged, creating its own weather system or own wind currents, I should say. And they did a fantastic job of stopping it where they did. It could have been much, much worse. And I not only want to thank Eugene Springfield Fire, but also partners from our surrounding area and the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, which cut loose task force or two to come down and and help especially manage the fire after the fact. One of the challenges was even after they were able to cut fire line around most of the perimeter. It was such such steep terrain that they had burning snags that were breaking off, falling and rolling downhill past the fire line. I've personally seen this in the past. That's how firefighters get killed in the wildland. So anyway, my hat's off to them, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for what they did that day.
Thank you for that.
Days, excuse me.
Yeah, thank you for that. Counselor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to both Counselor Evans and to Counselor Groves for your reports. The last six months of my life flashed before my eyes. Counselor Evans is giving the legislative report from the IGR committee. And and we were on pins and needles on the fourth, on the third of July in regards to the Moon Mountain Fire. And and so I echo Counselor Groves' appreciation for our first responders, Eugene Springfield Fire and neighboring agencies who 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 stepped up. I also want to thank the citizens of Eugene who recognized we were in a red flag warning mode and refrained from setting off fireworks this Fourth of July and adhered to our citywide prohibition on fireworks. Yes, there were still some who are hell-bent on doing their thing. But it's a long-term educational effort, and part of that educational effort comes with community members stepping up and doing the right thing. There is a reporting app that you can download and and use on your phone to report fireworks in your neighborhood. Apparently, there's a forty percent spike in the non-emergency line receiving complaints. But yet, there were no, to my knowledge, there were no citations given. It is pretty clear to me that education is is key. And so I want to thank staff. I want to thank EPD. I want to thank Eugene Springfield Fire for continuing to educate the public around firewise or fire safety to help prevent a moon mountain from going to from from getting much bigger than what it was and and keep our neighborhoods safe and secure during the holidays. Finally, Mayor, I had an opportunity to pinch hit for you. I thank you for that opportunity. It was a tough assignment. I had to go to the Eugene Chamber of Commerce happy hour at at Hayward Field. There there are some really engaging conversations revolving around housing and climate, and your Blue Ribbon Commission came up. And it was an an honor to to pinch hit for you last week.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah. I too wanted to thank the Eugene Springfield Fire Department and the great work that they did over the on-the-moon mountain fire, as well as O D F, which put a crew of about seventy people there and then several other fire departments fall around. That that mutual aid really does work and is very, very helpful and very important. I had frequent updates from the city manager and Chief Caven, who was in my ward near my property. And I could tell you, I it is super scary to see flames in your backyard. And and this was probably the largest. This according to the chief, this is the largest wildfire in a forest area that we've had in the history of Eugene. And unfortunately, I believe because of climate change and other factors and the drought, this isn't going to be the first and the last of these. We might need to shift how we do firefighting and bring on wildfire crews, which would be which would be an interesting shift and an expensive endeavor for the city. Ironically, the it started, the fire started at the water tank. And while the investigation's ongoing, the chief said he didn't believe it was started by homeless campers, but they don't know exactly how it was started.
Thank you. Did you have a?
I just had a couple corrections. Thank you, Counselor Keating and Zelenka, for for bringing up more about the fire. I actually had tea with Chief Skinner and Chief Caven on Friday to kind of talk a little bit about the the fireworks ban. And I know there was some information published that said calls were up forty percent. The reality is, this year, there were eight fewer calls about fireworks than there were last year. And that's direct out of the CAD from the nine-one-one system. And in addition, we had a very large wildland fire in our area that almost burned Spencer's Butte back in the eighties that I happened to be on as a younger firefighter. So it's just the people here now don't remember back that far. This is every year we've come close to having what could be.
Going there instead.
Yeah, we took, we hitched up the horses and went out. Thank you. But it's it's every year. And this is something a lot of people don't understand because we are able to jump on fires so fast with our force that we have here deployed throughout the area. But the reality is, every year, there are fires that could become conflagrations if they aren't jumped on quickly. You know, the difference between this and a fire up the McKenzie, the Holiday Farm Fire, first of all, it had very strong east winds. But secondly, until a sizable force could mobilize and get to the fire scene was over an hour to get up the McKenzie, where our firefighters were on top of this in a matter of minutes. And so that that's part of what makes the difference, but it could still get away. So I just wanted to clear that up for the record. And there's some things we're going to do better next year on fireworks to help with both reporting and hopefully also deter it. So thank you very much.
And if we we got lucky on that fire, if the waves had picked up and moved in a different way, it would have been a completely different story. But thank God, no, that happened.
But they were swirling as it was. They were burning in all different directions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much for that, all that information. Appreciate it. And I think with that, we're ready for consent calendar. So Counselor Groves, you're you're on deck again.
Okay, you need me.
I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar one.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's right, we're missing Lindsay. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, now we are ready for the public forum, which is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any hearing, on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official. And with that, I'm sort of looking to staff to see if they are ready to share the list, and it looks like they are. So I'm gonna just turn it over to you, Cherish.
Yes, we have thirteen speakers this evening. If you have signed up to speak via Zoom, please take this time to ensure that your screen name in Zoom matches the first and last name you use to sign up to speak. If your screen name does not match, we can not cannot promote you to a panelist to speak when it is your turn. We will announce two speakers' names at a time. If you are providing testimony via Zoom, when it is your turn, we will announce your name and promote you to panelist status. And you can unmute and turn on your camera if you wish. If you are announced as the next speaker and physically in the room, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please do not bring any bags with you to the podium. When you are called to speak, please state your name clearly and for Eugene residents, your ward or neighborhood, if known before beginning your comments. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. If you are watching the meeting, the timer should be visible. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of the two and a half minutes. Please note that screen sharing or displaying information on the screen is not allowed, and any misuse of the platform or violation of the council's code of conduct will result in immediate termination of speaking privilege. If you have documents to give counsel, please place them in the council inbox basket near the podium. Our first speaker this evening is Nancy Honard, followed by Dylan Plummer.
My name is Nancy Honard from Ward Two. City councillors, thank you for passing the ordinance to electrify low-rise new residential buildings. I'm sorry, the Ninth Circuit Court ruling against Berkeley's similar ordinance halted Eugene's ordinance. That is a setback, but not a defeat. I'm confident that you will move forward soon with decarbonization of existing and commercial building stock, while also working on a policy for new residential construction that complies with the Ninth Circuit Court ruling. The importance of this work you are doing becomes ever greater. Climate change is amping up. It's not only the fish or the birds who are dying anymore. This is unnecessary. The future can be brighter than this. You are working to create this better future. Thank you, Eugene City Council and Mayor Venice, for remaining steadfast in your commitment to fighting climate change and improving the health and safety of our city's residents by regulating the use of fossil fuels in buildings and working to transition our community off of fossil fuels entirely.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, we will hear from Dylan Plummer, followed by Mike McFarlane.
Hello, can you hear me?
We don't seem to be able to hear you yet, Dylan.
Can you hear me now? How about now? Is that working?
We don't seem to be able to hear you. How about I move to the next speaker and circle back to you, Dylan? Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Mike McFarlane.
Mike McFarlane, Ward Four. I just have some thank yous and some positive vibes for you today. No more anger. I I want to show my respect and thank you and thanks to Emily, who did a really difficult thing in the in the work session a few, a few, you know, a few hours ago. That's feel is the right thing, but those those things must be must have been difficult, and I really respect the move. So thank you. Next, thank you, Alan, for your well-crafted and well-thought-out motion directing the city manager to align the climate actions with things you've been working on for a while. And I and I kind of feel like this is a perfect storm where you've been doing a lot of work at state level, and you provided a a great conduit with our city. But this is your time to shine, and this is your time to really, really sort of show that that we can move forward, we can pull carbon out of the atmosphere. And I just I just really want to let you know I'm counting on you to to lead us in that direction. With every change of direction, there's an opportunity. And lastly, I I like to call on the activist community, the utility companies, the citizens, the government, to sort of come back together and and support the action that we have to take right now. And that's pulling carbon out of the atmosphere. And and that this this sounds like this big thing that we should know and do, but that's not what we're doing. And I look forward to that. A few things I'd like to hear more of. How how do we use less? How do we use less gas? How do we use less electricity? How do we lose use? I don't hear that conversation, and I would really like to have. How do we lose use that? I don't hear that conversation, and I would really like to have that sort of brought back into this discussion. Um, how do we get out of our cars? You guys drive here today? You know, I I did, but um I I think we all can do that in some way, just a little bit, because transportation is fifty percent of our problem. And I don't, you know, I'm I'm really glad we're focusing back on things like that.
Uh and then. Thank you, Mike. Your time is concluded. Next, we will hear from Dylan Plummer, hopefully. We did a little tweak on our end.
Yeah, it's it shows that I'm coming through on my end. Can you all hear me now?
No, we still can't hear you, Dylan. Give us just a moment.
You can hear him online just fine.
Try. Dylan, we're gonna try a couple more things. Worst case, we're gonna have someone else speak right now and then allow you to speak as an attendee. Sorry for all the trouble.
That's okay.
Um, our next speaker this evening is Jacob True. No, never mind. Jacob, since you're also on Zoom, we'll move to the next in person person, and that's Betsy Hits.
I'm not zooming. Oh, I'm so glad not to be zooming. Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Betsy Hits. I hail from Springfield, formerly from Ward One. I'm a grandparent and and an urban farmer who's been advocating for strong climate action since moving to Eugene in the fall of twenty fifteen. I was then an early climate refugee leaving the desert southwest. I want to thank you for repealing the electrification ordinance. Doing so helps avoid further complications and delays due to the Ninth Circuit Court's misguided decision and keeps Eugene on course with the climate recovery ordinance mandate to bring down emissions. The decision would stem which stems from a lawsuit funded by the fossil fuel industry, Southern California Gas, and billed to their ratepayer account is a recent hurdle concocted by the industry to block transition to clean energy in homes. It is one example showing how the fossil fuel industry will stop at nothing to fight common sense climate policy that seeks to shore up the health and safety of individuals and the planet in the short term and in the long term. Electrification of buildings has been shown to greatly reduce emissions. A Rocky Mountain Institute analysis showed that transitioning a Eugene home to all electric would reduce that home's emissions by seventy percent on average. No matter how it is accomplished, we still need to reduce emissions from new construction and from existing buildings. While the city of Berkeley is pursuing an appeal to the court's ruling, Eugene can take another path toward all electric new construction and at the same time take steps to bring down emissions in existing buildings. On July fourth, our country's celebration of independence, Planet Earth experienced the hottest average global temperature ever recorded. The following day, it was even hotter. It is imperative that all of us do all that we can to bring down greenhouse gas emissions that are increasingly negatively affecting our health and safety. Now, we need to declare a new independence from fossil fuels, especially methane gas. Thank you all for your continued action on climate.
Thank you, Betsy. Um and next we are going to try Dylan again as an allowed to talk as an attendee.
All right, can you hear me now? No.
Thank you for your patience, Dylan. We are working on a quick workaround, and you should be ready to go in just a moment.
Is he speaking? And I can't hear him in Zoom.
Can you hear me now?
Dylan, can you give us a test sound of one, two, three? Or raise his hand if he's currently speaking. Raise your hand if you're currently speaking.
I'm currently speaking.
It's a Zoom. It's a Zoom problem. Because I can't I can't hear him on here. Well. Who was the next in person?
Dylan, I'm so sorry. We're still having issues. We're gonna go to the next in person person. I I'm sorry to all our Zoom attendees. Thank you for your patience. Um our next in person attendee is Jim New.
I sympathize with Dylan. I've been in those in that seat. Um my name is Jim New. Uh I live in Ward Seven, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. I want to thank you for taking the initiative to adopt the ordinance requiring all construction be electric energy sourced in new residential buildings three stories or less. Actions that affect your constituents can sometimes be handed off as a political football, but most of you have the community long-term health and safety in mind by adopting that ordinance. Your vision for a fossil free future that is on a path to meet the goals of the climate recovery ordinance may not be recognized as such, but there are many of us that applaud your leadership. Several weeks ago, the Public Utilities Commission stated the Fossil Gas Utility Northwest Natural failed in their integrated resource plan to provide a long range carbon reduction goal and labeled it insufficient. The utility relied on state research on hydrogen blending and falsely claimed the Fossil Gas Utility was committed to addressing climate change. The hypocrisy is the research proved underachieving in carbon reduction while simultaneously the utility is suing the PUC because of state mandated reductions. The Oregonian reported today that the utility is petitioning the PUC to raise rates eight percent by the new year to pay for the legal costs of their suit. Also, recent studies have added because the carcinogenic gas benzene is emitted with nitrogen dioxide, carbon dioxide, methane and formaldehyde when using gas stoves. Benzene vapors are highly flammable and leads to acute myeloid leukemia in the human body. The city council's decision to not capitulate to the fossil gas utility and enter into a franchise agreement is proving to be very wise. Your tenacity and commitment to providing a fossil free future by adopting the ordinance, although currently challenged by the courts, will eventually prove to be a sound decision and a just first step. No matter the path council must take to reduce carbon emissions, your leadership is highly respected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. And next we will hear from our next in person speaker, David Eigel.
David Eigel, Ward One. I will be sending the members of the city council additional documentation of the glaring falsehoods of the Racing to Change exhibit by tomorrow. The exhibit was truly a vile and grotesqueness of the white Protestants of Lane County. As an example, Director of Saint Mary's Episcopal Church, the Reverend Frederick Jennings, other Protestant ministers and various members of the Eugene community have been falsely described as marching about on Eugene streets while shouting racial and religious epithets. Like much of Racing to Change, this tale is a sick fabrication. It didn't happen. Professor Frederick Dunn was neither a leader nor an active member of the Knights of the Ku Klux Klan Fraternal Order in the nineteen twenties. He was a brilliant scholar, a proud member of one of the most heroic abolitionist families in America, and a committed servant of the community he lived in, our community. Jennifer Yeh is far from the only person in a position of trust in this community to have abused their position in promoting this type of filth. But she's certainly among the frontrunners of those utilizing public funds to do so. Jennifer is to the honest presentation of history what Lady Macbeth is to the dutiful care of house guests. Most of the visitors to the Lane County History Museum come during the Lane County Fair in July. I think it is unlikely that without outside direction and prodding, that no effort will be made to inform the public that they have been deceived about Oregon history by the Racing to Change exhibit. I require I asked the city council members and others request that the Lane County History Museum prominently display and distribute information at the two thousand twenty-three Lane County Fair, as well as on the Lane County History Museum website, explaining the misinformation the Racing to Change exhibit presented. And to make a formal apology to the Protestant clergy of Lane County in general and specifically to the clergy and church members of Saint Mary's Episcopal Church. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh next, we are going to try Dylan Plummer again. Fingers crossed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Amazing. Thank you so much for troubleshooting. Um. All right, I'm gonna start my testimony now. Mayor Venice and members of the Eugene City Council, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Dylan Plummer, and I'm a resident of Ward Three in Eugene. I'm testifying today in my role as senior campaign representative with Sierra Club. On behalf of the thousands of Sierra Club members who live in Eugene, I'd like to thank members of the council for their unwavering support for climate action over the years. Despite the uncertainty caused by the egregious ruling on the city of Berkeley's electrification ordinance by Trump appointed judges at the Ninth Circuit, this council has shown that it is willing to continue to pursue common sense climate policy to transition our community off of fossil fuels. Time and time again, you have heard from your constituents that addressing the climate crisis and meeting the city's climate recovery ordinance is their top priority. And I have no doubt that this council will continue to listen and do everything in its power to develop policies to transition off of fossil fuels and help our communities take full advantage of the tremendous resources made available by the Inflation Reduction Act federally. With that said, I strongly urge councils to look to other cities in Oregon that are also pursuing electrification policies such as Ashland and Milwaukee to see the strategies that are being developed to craft legally defensible ordinance language that complies with the Ninth Circuit's ruling. And uh I encourage this council to pursue similar policies in the coming months. I want to make a special thank you to councillor Leach, um councillor Semple and councillor Zelenka for their motions and for all of our members of council that voted in support of these motions. It is more clear than ever that Northwest Natural and its cronies will do anything to stop climate action here in our city, whether creating and dispersing propaganda to convince schoolchildren to favor polluting gas, spending millions of dollars on litigation and political lobbying against key climate policy, or working with the American Gas Association to bankroll an anti-democratic front group in an effort to overturn a modest electrification policy. This corporation cannot be trusted to decarbonize on its own and must be regulated by this body and all governments, all levels of government if we are to have any chance to meet our climate recovery ordinance goals here in Eugene and our climate goals in Oregon. Please continue down the path you're on, prioritize people over polluters and public health over private profits. Please continue to work to ensure that Eugene is a climate leader and a shining example of what the just transition should look like for communities everywhere. Thank you so much for your consideration and for uh working with me to get my audio.
Thank you so much, Dylan. Next, we will hear from um our next two Zoom uh panelists, and that's Jacob True, followed by uh Stephen Bianco. Go ahead, Jacob.
Uh good evening. Uh my name is Jacob True. I live in Ward One. I'm a proud organizer with the Eugene Springfield Democratic Socialists of America. Let's be clear, climate change is already here. Um we've got the uh boreal forests up in Canada are already aflame. And early this month, like some of the folks before me uh mentioned, uh worldwide surface temperature highs that broken a couple times in succession. Um uh Antarctic sea ice extent is at the highest deviation from normal ever seen. We are seeing heat waves in the oceans around Florida and on land in Phoenix right now. Locally, I remember when we'd see rain occasionally in the summer. Um our climate is getting closer and closer to Medfords every year. The council's efforts to take sensible and moderate steps to address our fossil fuel years were effectively stymied by Trump appointed conservative judges on the Ninth Circuit Court. Um they serve the interest of capital, the fossil fuel industry in particular. This judicial capture has also paid dividends at the Supreme Court level um as they've struck and struck down affirmative action, um the limited student loan forgiveness that the Biden administration pushed forward and have impaired LGBT rights again. We must continue to organize locally, whether it is by union organizing, tenant organizing, through legislative efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. Um next we will, oh no. Okay, I don't see Stephen in Zoom. We will move to our next in person uh speaker this evening, Alyssa Karim, Kareem, followed by Sam Tyler.
Hello, Mayor Venice, City Councillors and City Manager Madary. For the record, my name is Alyssa Kareem. I am a law student at the University of Oregon, and I live in Ward Four. I want to say thank you for your efforts at electrification here in Eugene. It is encouraging and uplifting to see a step in the right direction. However, the climate crisis is here and only going to get worse. We need the Eugene City Council to concretely implement various solutions to end our reliance on fossil fuels now, not only electrification. Losing momentum serves no one. Before law school, the progressive national security community I worked in called nuclear detonation our biggest threat. The world as we knew it would be gone in the blink of an eye. But we also saw the other biggest threat is climate change, a slower process, but just as painful a destruction to Earth. And both scenarios are directly connected to human actions. I decided to come to law school here because I felt Oregon law would provide me a pathway to helping work on climate issues and environmental protection. For people my age and younger, climate change is a huge source of anxiety and uncertainty. We see disturbing signs of our world changing every season, increasing in intensity each year. My parents in rural Northern California now plan on evacuating my childhood home every summer. And I am not sure I will have children because I don't think I can guarantee them a world that will be suitable for a peaceful or fulfilling life. I am not sure if it will even make sense to buy a house in the near future, assuming I can afford one, because wildfires or floods may make it too risky on the West Coast. The El Nino, the Pacific Ocean climate cycle, replaced the cooler La Nina cycle in June and will make temperatures hotter across the globe for its next three year cycle. And just in the first week of July, scientists reported the three hottest days on Earth in a hundred and twenty-five thousand years. Climate emergencies are only going to keep coming. Every day we procrastinate and deny it as a civilization, time is lost, and we set up that much more dramatic of a lifestyle shift. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Um as a note, we did not see Stephen Bianco in Zoom. Stephen, if you're in there, please make sure your name matches. All right, next up is Sam Tyler, followed by Don Hetty.
Mayor Venice, Eugene City Council and Senator, Senator, uh City Manager Ben Derry, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Sam Tyler. I live in Ward Seven, and I'm a student at the University of Oregon. I want to thank the council for their leadership in the wake of the unfortunate Ninth Circuit uh court ruling. Um by repealing the electrification ordinance, you're allowing the community to to uh to avoid further struggles. They were elected to rise thanks to legal decision. Uh while I support the council's decision to repeal, um I'm sorry. I want to reiterate the uh importance of um the council to continue this process of meeting the city's climate uh climate ordinance uh goals and by uh building electrification through uh building electrification through other available legal pathways. Uh because despite progress being stalled here in Eugene, the council's willingness to pass the ordinance in the first place inspired other other cities to follow suit, look no forward, uh look no further than um Ashland for current confirmation of this. Other, another way to measure the impact of the ordinance was the tactics of the groups that opposed it. Uh the Ninth Circuit Court decision originates from a lawsuit funded by a fossil fuel company as well as uh Northwest Natural, the local company, taking similar litigation tactics, using uh misinformation and other tactics like that to get their goals across. It seems pretty evident to me that uh Northwest Naturals wouldn't act in bad faith. And um I've uh and I because I believe that because I've seen the impact of the city, uh the the council's firsthand. They know that other cities are more are gonna follow suit if you guys pass this, and they're scared of that. And I just, again, wanted to thank the council for their action and hope we can move forward with other climate action in the future.
Thank you, Sam. Next, we will hear from Don Hetty, followed by Aya Cochrane.
Good evening, Don Hetty, Ward Seven, Mayor, Council, Manager and Staff. Uh quickly, and there's a lot to unpack. Um in the nineteen seventies, Mayor Les Anderson led the effort in the ADA. That's why we have sidewalk cutaways. Uh Eugene first, nineteen seventy. My friend Jay Bolton worked with him on that. Tomorrow night, Monroe Park, Jefferson, Washington uh community will be having their annual picnic, five thirty to seven thirty. That's Monroe Park tomorrow night. Wednesday night, we're gonna have music at Skober Gardens. Wednesday night, music. Tomorrow night, picnic. Wednesday night, we're gonna have music at Skober Gardens. Wednesday night, music. Tomorrow night, picnic. Yogi Berra, great philosopher, ten rings. A nickel ain't worth a dime anymore. Keep that in mind. Time text. Boy, it's getting hot. We've heard about that. Whoa, Nellie. You know what's even worse is the gaslighting we're getting. Because you know what? It truly is an existential crisis, and we haven't been treating it as such, and we're still not treating it as such. The only truth I heard tonight were from Dylan and Jacob. Thank you, guys. I like to point out that we've got a fake case, an non-existent plaintiff at the Supreme Court. Then we get the what-ifs about the legislators that are told they're gonna lose their chance to run for reelection, walk out anyways and plan on running. Oh, and then at the local level, when we're talking about rent protections, we get all these made-up what-ifs. That's just a few examples of the gaslighting. So I'm gonna go back to Barra. Remember that? A nickel ain't worth a dime anymore. Now, five percent used to be a fair return. Now I got a guaranteed ten percent rent increase, and that's where the inflation's at. Where are the units being built when rent's that high already? And I got something to say about the fifty million dollars in urban renewal funds. We're gonna eyeball that. Back to the climate. It's that real, and we gotta do it now. And there's no leadership, not from Biden, not from anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next, we will hear from Aya Cockram, followed by our final speaker, Chuck Arford.
Dear Mayor Venice and City Councilors, my name is Aya Cockram. I live in Ward One. I was born and raised in Eugene, and I'm now raising my family here. I want to commend you all, in particular my counselor, Emily Semple, for taking this ordinance off the table. Passing the residential ordinance was absolutely the right thing to do. The widely criticized Ninth Circuit Court ruling cast a shadow of uncertainty over this pathway to electrify new construction. While repealing the ordinance was the right decision, it is critical that the city continues to pursue concrete solutions to the climate crisis and maintains its commitment to building electrification through other legally available pathways. Nothing has foundationally changed. We are still in a climatic emergency. Burning gas in homes still causes serious health effects like asthma and admits known carcinogens like benzene. Fract gas still fuels justice issues from extraction to end use disproportionately affecting historically marginalized people and vulnerable groups. And the overwhelming majority of testimony is still coming from advocates of electrification. I heard several counselors reference the number of signatures and the speed with which they were collected for the referendum petition. I want to note that Northwest Natural was the primary funder of this referendum petition and that this gas corporation spent over a million dollars in less than two months to essentially buy this referendum. The gas industry has a very obvious vested interest in striking down electrification ordinances like the one passed by this council. And Northwest Natural has shown again and again that they are willing to propagandize to children, manipulate the truth, and spend vast amounts of money to keep their business afloat. We also know that the legal challenge that resulted in the Ninth Circuit Court ruling was funded by another fossil fuel company, SoCal Gas. Our health and future is not for sale. I urge you to stay true to the landmark decision you made in February, an act of leadership that gave me hope for my daughter's future. Please do not allow this bump in the road to become an unnecessary delay in the critical transition off of fossil fuels. I thank Councillor Leach for her motion to have staff bring back alternative pathways to electrify new buildings, and I look forward to the work session that will come out of Councillor Zelenka's motion. It is still time for a fossil-free Eugene, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Aya. Next, our next speaker is Chuck Arford.
Good evening, Chuck Arford, Ward Eight. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. I understand and appreciate your decision to pull the electrification ordinance from the ballot. The Ninth Circuit Court's flawed legal decision really leaves us no choice. The city of Berkeley is appealing, and we are optimistic they will prevail. Again, I applaud and thank you for passing the ordinance in the first place in the face of significant opposition from Northwest Natural and others who persevered and did the right thing. Make no mistake, polls consistently show that two-thirds of Americans support increased government action to address climate change. And this was before the weather went haywire, which it has done in recent months. This initiative, I believe it would have passed if it weren't for the Ninth Circuit Court. Headlines are dominated by extreme weather, enormous fires, terrible flooding, record heat, all fueled by climate change. Right now, we are at the point of no return for many climate features, including the melting of the glaciers and sea ice, the burning of the subalpine forests, and perhaps most frightening, the disruption of global ocean currents that mix nutrients and support all life in the sea. Greenhouse gas emissions are not slowing or plateauing, but instead are growing to record levels. We, particularly our children, are approaching a level of destruction and suffering we can scarcely imagine. Incredibly, segments of this community still support the construction of new fossil fuel infrastructure with increasing greenhouse gas emissions. Talk about divisiveness. The people of Finland were recently ranked as the happiest in the world. And they credit a concept called Sisu, which roughly translates to inner strength, stoic determination, grit, courage, tenacity, and resilience in the face of tremendous adversity. The people of Eugene and the city council will continue to adopt measures to address climate change, but we will need Sisu.
Thank you, Chuck. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you so much. Thank you. First of all, a little round of applause for the staff who have, like, struggled with technology and come through. So great appreciation. It's deeply frustrating, you know. You know, so for all of you, but great appreciation for getting us through that. And also, it's very meaningful, at least to me, I will say, to have all of you testify in support of the decision we made earlier this evening because it is an agonizing choice to be having to make. And so just appreciate your support as we navigate that and share your optimism that there is really excellent work that we can and will do in this city to address climate change, and we'll work together to do that work. So thank you very much for supporting us today. And with that, I open to, so I've got Councillor Semple and then Councillor Zelenka.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came tonight. I will admit, I walked in, saw the red shirts and went, oh, no. It's been a while. They're here to yell at me. So I'm really grateful for advocates of electrification for understanding the motion I had to make tonight. It was unpleasant, to put it nicely, to have to do that. But we still have hope, and you give me hope. Fight's not over. We're taking a pause, reevaluating, learning more, opening our community to new ideas. One of which, thank you, Mike McFarland, for bringing up, we need to use less. That is really critical. We would not be having so much shortages and pollution if we used less. Didn't drive so much, less gasoline, better insulation in windows, less heat. Whatever kind you have, it's still not great for the environment. Stop throwing out so much food. Stop having so much packaging around our food and stop making so many people. Thank you.
Councillor Zelenka.
Yes. Thank you for coming in tonight and saying, and thank you for saying thank you. I want to let everybody know that I'm a hundred percent behind the city of Eugene moving forward to develop in the near term a climate action plan that focuses on actual significant greenhouse gas emission reductions. We have a lot to work with, especially if we work to align what we're doing with the leadership from the state of Oregon and the Biden administration. The bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act ended up being the largest investment in climate action in history of the world. And it's something to take note of and something to get on board with. So I'm really excited about moving forward and focusing on those four pillars of decarbonization, energy efficiency, doing less, doing more with less, cleaning up the electric grid, electrifying end uses, and developing low-carbon fuels for those areas that we can't electrify. So that, I'm really excited about where we're headed in the next year or two.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I didn't realize this until David Igle spoke, but I always thought that Councillor Yeh, I compared you with Julia Roberts, but now you're compared with Shakespeare's greatest villain. So, so and that's jokes, so, but I fully agree with Councillor Zelenka. I think that we have a path that we can move forward with a decarbonization strategy and a package of incentives that will encourage both business and our community members to move forward with decarbonization and not just focus on one fuel source or one energy source, but to use a multiplicity of sources that are non-carbon-based. And look at how we can move this forward. And I'm looking forward to the work session and how we can begin to make this happen. And I think that we're gonna come out with a very good result, and I believe that most of the people on this council are going to support that effort and what we end up coming up with.
Thank you. Councillor Gross.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to start off by saying I agree with everything I've heard my colleagues say so far. In fact, going back to the beginning of this process, I was wanting to do the tick list that Councillor Zelenka rattled off. I think we have a lot of room where we can make good decisions to reduce our carbon footprint, to reduce GHG emissions, and do it from a positive standpoint. We need to be bringing people together as we move forward and not dividing. And I think this gives us an opportunity to reset and come back and find ways that actually will have higher production in the right direction and rally people around a common cause. And I think we do that by finding and working with the incentives that are available. Councillor Zelenka is correct. We've never seen this kind of money cut loose before that can help people make transitions. You know, I personally put in a heat pump this year, and I love it. It does a really good job of both heating and cooling. But I also have gas. I've got both. And, but I'm still saving some of the emissions that were there before, in fact, quite a bit. So anyway, I'm looking forward to this new chapter, and I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and helping with this process and seeing what we can do to reduce the situation that we're in now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from other councillors?
Yeah, Councillor Keating. A quick one, if I may, Mayor. And as Councillor Gross just mentioned, echo and ditto to everything I'm hearing at the dais as well. You're not my constituent, Mike McFarland, but I've enjoyed our floats down the river. I enjoy our conversations when we run across each other at a ballgame. And no offense to Randy or Alan, but you got the best Hawaiian shirt in the building today. Hawaii's on top of mind. I don't know if there's a honeymoon around the corner or if I've approached fifty and Facebook thinks I'm like the perfect demographic for Hawaiian shirts, but your point, Mike, about bringing our activist community, our business leaders, our government together is not lost on me. And I was especially encouraged to see you and Patty connect. And so thank you for doing so. And it reminds me of the wisdom, Mayor, that you've had in building your Blue Ribbon Commission. What council did earlier this evening was not an easy thing to do, but is the right thing to do based on the circumstances surrounding the Berkeley decision. But we can't move forward without everyone's buy-in, and your seat at the table and your voice matters. So thank you for the mahalo. Thank you for the wise, sage approach. Mayor, thank you for the creation of the aforementioned Blue Ribbon Commission. We'll get there. We'll get there. And there's a whole suite of pathways by which we'll get there, but we'll get there. It's because of you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. It's a good feeling to have a council united to act on climate. So there we go. Thank you all, all of you for your support and to the council. And so with that, let's move on to Consent Calendar Two, please.
I will, and my Los Angeles Dodgers Hawaiian shirt. I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar Two. Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And then that takes us to item number six, an action and ordinance concerning administration and adoption of a technical code for construction. Manager, do you need to introduce this one? Thank you.
Yeah. This is an opportunity for the council to take action on an ordinance concerning administration and adoption of a technical code for construction. The ordinance includes updates to Eugene Code Chapter Eight that are necessary to maintain the city's current level of regulation of building construction. The proposed changes remove obsolete language, replace outdated terminology, and include updates that reflect changes to state laws regarding local administration of state building codes. There are no new regulations or regulated structures as a result of the updates. You had a public hearing on June twentieth and received no testimony. We have staff available to answer questions.
Okay, I'm just gonna turn to Council President to put a motion on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt the ordinance concerning administration and adoption of a technical code for construction is set forth in attachment A. Second.
Any questions, comments, need for clarification? All right, all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and that passes unanimously. And with that.
We are adjourned, do we need?